All the meetings order. Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming out. I hope everyone enjoyed their snow day. Agenda and is there anything to add?
I just have something to add to discussion items. Just the snow plowing bid.
Okay.
Number four.
Okay. When it's November the 4th. Anything to add or change or?
Move to a place?
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Privilege of the floor, number one. Would anyone like to speak?
Are there copies of the budget that we can look at?
Yes.
I will pass out some when I get to that. I do have a few extra copies.
All right, principals report.
We've had a really special November. We had Veterans Day. I wanted to say thank you to everyone who contributed to the assembly. The extra time and effort resonated through our school and beyond. One of the veterans who attended wrote this email to us and I just wanted to share it. "I just want to share with you that I was really impressed with the tribute this morning. It was sincere and the work the kids put into it was amazing. I'm not around little kids much anymore and I wonder sometimes if the school systems are promoting the values of patriotism, respect, and honor. Today blew me away and assured me that I shouldn't worry one bit. Today's event made whatever sacrifices I made in my 22 years in the Army more than worthwhile. I sincerely appreciate the time and effort the students, teachers, and administrators took to make this event possible and for the enduring lessons the kids are being taught." So it was a great letter and it was, it was great. I looked over at the veterans and it was representative of families and former PES students. It was, it was a special event. We also had a great turnout for our one book, one school around the book Wish Tree. We had probably over 50 people and it was great to see full families here. Our community read Wish Tree and the story helped to expand learning opportunities, deepen a love for reading, and serve a message of kindness. Families brought traditional dishes and mingled over good food while discussing the book. I want to thank Michelle Aprileano, Angela Kennison Como, Ann Murphy, Erica Lebrun, Jessie Dixon, watch again, Geneva Sambor, Jennifer Deluge, Paula Tanner, Lori Clary for really helping to organize this uplifting event. And speaking of gratitude, our Thanksgiving luncheons were a terrific success. Thank you to Kelly. She spruces it up, makes it a classy event with tablecloths. Thank you to the teachers who had their classes help decorate, to the middle school students who served, to the kitchen crew. Best meal ever is what I heard, and to the families who joined us. It was great to see so many parents and grandparents. PES staff always swoops in to make sure that every child feels special. And the last thing I have is just that we have established an Instagram account and just wanted to run that by you and see what your take is on it. I worked with Pam Martin from the SAU office. We have, our account is PES learners. We are focusing just on student work and celebrations. Students are not identified in writing or in images, but we do feel like it's a form of communicating the great work and the learning that is happening here at Plymouth Elementary School. Presently, we have five posts focusing on Veterans Day and Thanksgiving and one STEM project. And we have 25 followers and we're following two. We're following SAU 48 and Holden and Central School. So we thought we would start small, just to dip our toe in social media. We have important upcoming dates, probably the most asked, well, this coming Saturday, we have the Jingle Bell Run and Pancake Breakfast that supports our winter program. And we have our holiday concert on December 17th. And whether you have students in there or not, it's really a great event to get your, get the spirit of the holt, the season.
Thank you. What time is the Jingle Bell Run?
I think it's eight. I think the doors open at eight.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
So I don't really have any formal notes tonight. We're kind of in between, but winter teams are all up and running. Numbers are good. This coming week, the seventh and eighth grade basketball teams will host Berlin. So they have their home opener on Wednesday. And then on Friday, they travel to Multonboro. And our fifth and sixth grade basketball teams will host Thornton on Friday. Other than that, safety wise, this Wednesday, we've got New Hampshire Homeland Security. Some of their members are coming back to meet with myself and Chief LaFave and kind of review and talk about the tabletop that we had back in August and for them to give us some insights. And then we will have our safety committee meeting Wednesday afternoon and can go over that again with our committee. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And pay off everybody sign off on that video. And correspondence.
Just want to let you know the presidential primary is February 11. That's something that was confirmed.
Okay.
Since you have voting in the schools.
Mm-hmm.
And then.
Sorry, since February 11.
And the correspond-
We're closed that day, aren't we?
Yes.
Yeah. And then any correspondence I had sent to you through an email last week. So I sent you several articles and a document.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Discussions item. Hi, John.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
We're going to do our energy audit follow-up.
Okay.
We're ready for you.
So as we last talked, we kind of honed in on exactly what we wanted to do for this year. So I planned the financing of that around it.
Thank you.
There's a couple there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So as you can see, we're doing, looking at the LED lighting in the building, weatherization, some, just some control analytics. That just means we're reviewing software programs for the existing digital control system we have and changing out transformers. Total 321,233 dollars. As you can see in the energy savings column, that generates 27,100 in savings a year. Potential rebates are in at 52,000 and our payback on that is about 9.83 years. And that gave us two leasing options. And I'd be opting the 10-year lease at the 32,570 dollars a year. And if you look at the difference between energy savings at 27,400 and the annual lease payment of 32,570, it's approximately $6,000. That's what we would have to raise in the budget per year for those 10 years till we paid it off.
Okay.
So the bulk of the, the bulk of the cost will come from the savings in the energy. Okay?
Perfect. Thank you.
Any questions?
We have to make a decision about what to do about this.
Well, yeah, I think we were looking to move in some sort of direction. And I think if you decided, I think, reading through the first draft of the budget and then seeing where you want to go as far as adding or decreasing anything, it would be about six-
About 6,000.
6,000 in addition under the electricity line per year if you were to move forward with it.
Okay.
So it's just a decision you'd have to make through the budget process.
Okay.
And we'll be renegotiating the electrical contract because we third-party buy our power. So I don't know where that'll fall on the market just yet, but that'll probably start next month. So I should have some answers before we finally close the budget to see where we land on that.
Okay.
Okay?
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking of budget, first draft.
So I will take, I will take you through page by page, line by line for the most part. I'll summarize some other areas as well.
Too much.
Okay. There you go. Okay, I think we're right. There you go.
Here's another couple.
Uh.
I have one too.
Yep. So if the board wants to stop me at any point and have any questions, feel free. Typically, I'll just run through it. Then if you want to take notes or say, what's that? Or, you know, I'll explain each item and what's included. Julie has the backup of most of it and can explain how it's, certain pieces are implemented as well. Okay? So we'll start with the 1100 account, which is most of your budget as far as salaries are concerned. So these are, in this first line for salaries includes all your classroom teachers as well as any specialists. There's some, there are some outliers that are in different categories that you'll see throughout the budget as well. Included in that is 33.6 full-time equivalents. That is the same as that what you projected last year. Please remember, you did not fill one of those positions. So it includes that same position in there where you, which you could decide at a later date what you want to do with that based on numbers and needs. Okay? Jumping down, all of the other pieces are some fixed costs as far as salary, LTD, FICA, retirement, unemployment, workman's comp, and longevity. Maintenance, maintenance contract stays the same at 3,500. Rental equipment is increased by 1750. Supplies around the same at 24,000. That's all general supplies for the classrooms. Printed media is up significantly. Our math curriculum is expiring. So typically, you're just replacing consumables for the literacy curriculum or social studies or science. The math curriculum that we have in place now is done at the end of this year. So this is just recycling it. We're going to split the cost over two years. That's a K through A program. So that's all new materials for that piece.
How often do we, what's the time period?
So it's typically a six-year license that we do that. We try to offset with the literacy curriculum as well. Okay? Computer software is up by 7,173 and that is just moving our student information system, some of the requirements we have under that piece, as well as other platforms that we use in the district. So most of these software systems are split between all the schools within SAU 48. So it can be anything from testing software, from student information system, et cetera. New equipment, we're not requesting any new equipment at this point. New furniture is 1,00628 and I think that's, what does that include, Julie?
That is an easel, some of the new seating, the wobble chairs, and a STEM center for kindergarten.
Line 16 you'll see is up significantly. And this is because typically you put this in a Warren article. You've put all your computer tech upgrades into a Warren article. It's going back in the budget because now you're at the replacement cycle of your Chromebooks that you initially voted on several years ago. So they're at the end of their agreement too. So you're just recycling, you're upping those as well. Other equipment is at zero. Dues and fees you'll see down a little bit and those are just online professional dues as well.
Going back to the Chromebooks, is that equipment or is that a lease agreement? How do we, how do we?
So we purchase the equipments.
Okay.
And then they have an end of life at this point. So we try to use them for a few years, but then, then some of the times they just don't sustain the software that we need on there as well because they can't update.
They go out a full year.
Is there any grant money out there specifically for technology and Chromebooks?
There are sometimes availability for that. It's just not guaranteed. Yep.
I'd be curious if we can research that.
Yeah.
To see if there's anything.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Jumping down to substitute, this is kind of a moving target. It depends on who you have add on long-term leaves, et cetera. So that's at $35,000. That's going to remain the same. All those are fixed on that piece too. Instructional aids, we're not requesting any instructional aids. So that would be any regular ed aids. And we typically don't have those anymore. It's all special education paraprofessionals tied to an individual education plan. Page two, special education. So Plymouth's caseloads as far as IEPs are within the state average as far as around 15 to 18 percent is typically what we're looking at. What we have noticed over the past couple of years is the, the disabilities are becoming, becoming a little bit more complicated. So you'll see a difference in some of the lines just based on, it's not about the numbers of kids, it's about the need at this point that Plymouth is servicing. That covers 6.0 full-time special ed teachers at this point. I'm going to jump down to line 46. And this is, the, most of these lines are tied right to individual education plan. So purchase services or any services that we have to purchase for children with autism, if there's a behavior interventionist, if there's someone, if there's other services that are required for us to bring in the school that we don't have the staff to provide for the child. That's, that's, so it depends every year on the caseload and what the needed is. And right now, it's down 38,890. And you have to remember, this includes pre-K through eighth grade because we're responsible for servicing children's age, ages three through five as well.
Can I ask here, are the, are the proposed budget numbers based on our expenses year to date, what we're seeing this year? Because I know we, our, my understanding is we're seeing more cost this year than we had projected.
Yep.
Okay.
So you're seeing, we already have numbers in for early intervention coming in as well. So birth to age two. So we know our three-year-olds coming in as well as kids coming into the kindergarten. So we have those pieces. But yes, some of those, some of those figures are based on what we're spending at this point.
How long have we been at 6 FTE for the special ed?
Three years. I think it's three years.
Three years, yep.
Yeah, this is 130.
Yep. And we've reduced that. That, you used to have more, more than that. Yep.
Okay.
Testing evaluation, that's for required evaluations as part of the IEP special education process. Other purchase services, so again, that's tied right into IEPs. Tuition, I'll explain this in, in great detail if I can. You'll see that's up 450,000, well, it's 450,000, it's up 119,860. And that's the obligation for us to provide services to any child out of district that are Plymouth residents. It includes the foster care system. If they're removed while they're in Plymouth and they go somewhere else, we pay for that as well as charter school special ed services is, the cost is on the local district as well. So we pay for all the special ed services as part of the charter school legislation as well.
What, what changed from last year to this year that it went up so much?
New kids.
And up triple from two years ago?
Yeah, it's a moving target because you can have, so for instance, you can have students at behavioral placements, but you can have, also have children that are critically ill that just have moved in and, and have turned of school age. And so now there are responsibilities. So you have to remember, a cost of one program in a hospital setting or residential program is over $100,000 a year. And that, and that is requirement that we have to pay. The school district is responsible for 100% of that cost unless they're involved with DCYF.
Is there, I mean, how many children or students does that, $450,000, like, what are we looking at in terms of, I understand there's different levels of complexity, but how many, how many students does that account for?
Less than 10.
Less than 10.
Yep.
That's a really a number that we have control over because we have to provide the services.
Yep.
So.
Yeah. Travel at one, but that's always, it's one of those pieces that you're, you're just stuck with. It's, it's, it's just one of the, just whatever comes our way.
And that's pre-K through eight as well?
Pre-K through eight.
Okay.
Let's see. Supplies is down a little bit. Textbooks, printed media, so that's supplemental intervention at 300. Software, so this is any student software connected right to individual IEPs at 2,943. New equipment, 300. New furniture, one. Dues is at one as well. So overall, that, that category is up 106,671, which is significant. Special ed tutors is at one, but again, that's a moving target. If you have somebody hospitalized for a temporary period of time, you're obligated to, to provide tutoring for that piece. Special education aids, again, all connected to students with disabilities. So you're at 21.4 full-time equivalents. The reason it's a .4 is because you have part-time preschool. So some of the folks are just here in the morning or part-time. Substitute salaries is at one. Some fixed costs there. And then all, as far as longevity, that's all tied into the collective bargaining agreement. There's a special ed secretary at halftime that's in the front office. So that's what the next line is. Moving to page three, extended school year is part of the special education process as well. And that's summer school for students who are required to have summer school as part of their special ed program. So salaries are at 17,000. And that's usually tutors or part-time teachers that are here for a few hours a day. Jumping down to line 89, purchase services. Again, as I said on the previous page, purchase services are for continued use of behavior specialists or autism specialists that are connected to the child. Overall, that line is up 4,0361.
Before you go, Carla, can I ask you a question about?
Sure.
The special education secretary, what is her, his or her role or function, what do they do?
So filing, scheduling meetings, contacting parents.
Which is a challenging job because you have, you know, there's a lot of people to coordinate for the special education meetings.
Yeah.
When you say filing, is that just an increase requirement?
Compliance, there's, there's a compliance issue. Yeah, that's, that's.
Almost like a case manager kind of question.
Yep. Bilingual education, which is really English as a second language. This is again, depending on how many students are required to receive English as a second language. And it depends on who you have there this, at, who you get every year. And it's scripted by the Department of Ed as far as how much intervention a child with ESOL has. So they have an assessment and then it, it's, regurgitates what, what they get for intervention as far as time. Okay?
And who's the outside person for that, correct?
We contract out with that, that person. Co-curricular activities, so it's your non-athletic activities. That stays the same at 20,000. Some fixed costs there. Other professional services at 2,000. Travel at one. Supplies at 500. Dues and fees at one. So that's like TSA, yearbook, things like that. School-sponsored activities, coaches' salaries. So that's connected to the collective bargaining agreement too. Same with co-curricular. So it can be a little influx sometimes depending on, on who's coaching. We're keeping that the same at 30,000. And then jumping down to purchase services, line 113, at 10,000. And that's usually for refs and things like that, right, Kelly?
Mm-hmm.
Your officials.
Repairs and maintenance. So that's for equipment at 4,000. Supplies, 5,000. And then hopefully getting on replacement of uniforms. So we've increased that a little bit to replace some of the uniforms that are, we're not able to wear anymore.
Well outdated.
Dues and fees, 3,500. Summer school is not typically offered unless it's grant-funded. So that's down to one. After-school program is the, the district supplements subsidize 30,000 of the after-school program. The other is covered by Plymouth Parks and Rec. So that is your portion. That was voted in several years ago with a Warren article. So that's just in the budget at this point. Preschool, so your salaries are in line 126. And remember, we do get quite a bit of revenue from preschools, which you'll see in the revenue side when I review that as well. So that's one full-time teacher. Jumping down to purchase services, that's at one. Tuition is at one. Supplies, 250. Guidance services, yep.
Is the preschool, is that part of the collective bargaining agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Salaries for guidance. So you have one, one full-time guidance counselor here. So that's reflected of that person.
Does that also fall under collective bargaining?
Yep. All falls under that. Appraisal fees at 4,034. You'll see that's down a bit. That we just moved it into a more appropriate line. That was our testing services for like the NWEAs, Ames Web, et cetera. Medical fees, so typically we offer students physicals for sports clearance. So that's something we contract through Spear with. School nurse is also contracted out through Spear. You have one full-time person here. You see that's down a little bit. The hospital took out the surcharge fee that they initially had a few years ago. So that went down a little bit. We've contracted out for a while now. That's worked out very well. They provide subs for us and stuff as well. So we, it's very hard to find substitute nurses. So they, they cover all of that. Psychological services, again, that's tied right into special education. And that's any testing or counseling services that are, that's in a child's individual education plan. Page five is speech pathology. So again, this is all under special education. 2.0 speech pathologist, again, includes preschool through grade eight, all tied to special ed, individual special ed programs. There's nothing we have to purchase for under line 178 because we have our own in-house folks. Testing and evaluation and as well as supplies at 100. Speech assistant, so you have one speech assistant, assistant to help the speech pathologist due to the caseloads. So that, that person is, is listed there. No change. Physical therapy, again, connected to individual education plans. So that is the cost that we're projecting for next year, 17,020. Again, what's it?
It's contracted out.
Yes, we do contract out for physical therapy. We do contract out for occupational therapy as well. Again, that's a moving number based on your caseload tied to special education. So we're looking at an increase of 6,812. Nothing in printing and binding and nothing in instruction and curriculum development services. Page six, instructional staff training services. Again, this is tied right to the collective bargaining agreement. This is all the teachers professional development that's listed in there. So any coursework or workshops come out of that line. School library services, we have 1.0 full-time library media specialist right here in the library. So that is required. And printed materials at 5,000, usually that's printed media. And then dues and fees for any professional organizations. Audiovisual services, we don't use much of this line anymore, but only to repair older equipment. So that would be for light bulbs for projectors or any old overheads. I don't even know if we have overheads anymore, but.
These and that.
Mostly these.
Yep.
School board services. Uh, school board services, so the salaries of the school board in line two thirty-eight, which remains the same. And then under that includes advertising, supplies, and any subscriptions if requested, as well as dues and fees, which is the New Hampshire School Boards Association. School board secretary is at one, because it's included in the office, in the regular office. Page seven is the district treasurer, that remains the same, as well as the fixed costs. And then jumping down to election services, again, pretty much the same, no change. We have an annual audit at six thousand a year.
What was the name, what's the name of our auditing firm?
Uh, it was Grislack and Company, but the lead auditor, Jim Robert, just took over the company because Steve decided to retire, so now you'll see a voice now for Robertian Company instead of Grislack and Company, but it's the same lead auditor on two.
Uh, line two seventy-four is legal services, so that's if we were, we seek counsel for anything. We have taken over our own fingerprint expenses. Typically, we used to send out, but that was costing us quite a bit more, so we, we brought that in.
How is our year-to-date running compared to where our actuals were in twenty nineteen? Do we have a rough idea?
I have no idea about year-to-date.
Okay.
I'd have to spend...
For legal?
Just, just curious if we're, I mean if you...
Or fingerprint?
Uh, just legal.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
No, it's fine.
No, we haven't, so I don't think there's anything that we've used for that yet, that I know, for Plymouth.
No, I can, I can...
You have a legal check? Contingency, school board services, that's for...
It's a similar, it's a similar...
Yep. Office of the superintendent, so that's the SAU, that is up, because we had to, we put in a technology director based on all the data and security requirements that are now, that we now need to follow, so that's something that, that is needed at the SAU level to provide at, at each of, each of our sending schools. So that is the increase.
And this is our portion?
It's your portion, yeah.
Is the same true of the treasurer, that's our portion, or how does that work?
Well, you have your own treasurer.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Technology coordinator, that's one-point-oh in the building. Had that position for a few years now. I would say, how long have you had that position in place?
I want to say five years.
Five years, yeah, yeah. Jumping to page eight. You have two administrators in the building, principal and assistant principal. Jumping down to repairs and maintenance, so this is anything in the front office, not just the principal and assistant's principals' repairs. So you have postage, which, which is for the school printing and binding. Supplies, two hundred, subscriptions at one. Software, so this is any management system within the office as far, as far as activity account software, et cetera. Dues and fees, professional dues and fees at two thousand. Other secretarial services, so in the main office, there's two and a half, and then the other half of one of the folks is the special ed secretary, so that's what's covered there. No change in the number of staff in that function. Financial accounting's at one, that's listed in a, in a different line. Operating building services, feel free to jump in, John, if, if, if there's any detail that's needed. Operating building services at, is at the same as four-point-oh. Again, that's part of the support staff collective bargaining agreement, as far as raises and whatnot. Jumping down to technical services is at three thousand. So again, that includes your, would it be the infrastructure for computer?
Yeah, that's a, a new line for us, and that's, that's our outside outsourcing specialty people on our higher-end, more sophisticated components, that, that's on a wall.
Water and sewage is at twelve thousand. Disposal services at twenty thousand. Repairs and maintenance contracts at fifty-five thousand. That's up, up five thousand from last year. Continuing, yeah.
That's multi-stated of equipment. A lot of our components are now coming into our eleventh year.
Yeah.
So beginning to see, you know, more breakdowns to come, so we're just increasing the cover for that.
Uh, page nine, computer licenses stays at the same, same. Rental of equipment is the same, property liability insurance, no change. Voice communication, no change. Data communications, no change as well. Travel at two hundred, supplies at twenty thousand, so that's all your operating building pieces. Your electricity is at sixty-five thousand. Do you anticipate that changing, John, or is that, or is that the same?
That's going to drop. That's going to drop.
So I'll have a new number for you for your next, for your, the next, for the draft, too?
And if we move forward with LED lighting, obviously, that's, that's going to be another, another period of drop.
Mm-hmm. Fuel oil at forty thousand? Uh, so, yep.
We're negotiating, that'll be renegotiated in January twenty twenty. So hopefully I'll have the new, the new number for the new budget cycle. I think right now we're at two, two oh three a gallon, so I don't know, I don't know where we'll be at in January, yet.
John, are your energy savings for the projects based on their current prices we're paying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Software at twenty-five hundred, repairs to building one, new equipment, one. Replacement of equipment is, this is something that's been deferred over the past few years. We could defer it again, but it's something that's part of your capital improvement plan, so that's, it's back in there, but we can certainly talk about it. Uh, replacement of computers and network equipment, so this is all the infrastructure as far as sonic walls and whatnot, so that is added in. Again, typically, this was all voted on in a Warren article, but something that's absolutely needed because some of the licenses are expiring. So it's just consumed into the regular budget.
And this is following that, that new five-year CIP plan that we put together for all this equipment, so that you can now look out five years and see what's coming, upcoming years, getting ready for.
John, can I ask a quick question? Does the, something like the floor equipment, does that reduce labor cost at all?
Big time, big time. And that, that light has come up on eleven years old now. We bought that when we finished renovations in '09, and so that...
So we have, we have existing equipment that's kind of at end of life?
It is, this is replacement of one of those pieces.
How long do they typically last, average?
You know, it depends on night they use. This, this piece gets used every night in all the large areas. Usually, we try to turn them every five to six years, but we keep deferring it. So at some point, I'm just going to lose it, and then it becomes more labor, very labor intensive.
Line three sixty, salaries for care and upkeep of ground services, so that's your portion of the Parks and Rec piece. Contracted services is at one, snow plowing at ten thousand, five hundred. Repairs and maintenance at twenty-eight hundred, building improvements at six thousand. So again, this is something that has come up kind of from year to year, so it replaced the roof on the dugout that's falling apart, so it's something we could talk about every year, but it, it's, it's part of the plan. Twenty-five hundred, it's up for supplies, and that's to replace the wood chips on the playground.
Do they ever get removed, or is they just added to?
No, usually, we, we take them down and move them to the pile act, and then spread them out.
Piano tuning at one. Student transportation, that, we are part of a contracted Durham School Services, so that is for regular transportation to and from school. Special education is another obligation that significantly impacts local budgets, and this includes not only in-house special ed kids, but kids that are traveling out of district, as well as our homeless obligation. For any child that's homeless, we have to split the cost with the sending district as well. So that has a significant impact, and we never know what that number is going to be. Athletics, not changing at fifteen thousand. Field trips, not changing as well. Line three eighty-two is your portion of the school resource officer that was voted in last year as part of a Warren article. And the last page. Food service supervision, repairs and maintenance at one. Computer licenses, so that's software program at two fifty. New equipment for the kitchen, one thousand, transfer to food service fund, one. Construction services is at one. That's something you usually make a decision about af, after. Health insurance is up significantly. Remember, that's tied right into your collective bargaining agreement, so that's up ninety-four thousand, four fifty-two. Dental insurance is up two thousand, two oh three. So your total district funds is up significantly at three ninety-six, three hundred ninety-six thousand, eighty-four for appropriations. I'll go through the revenue page first, and then look to the board for subdirection as, as far as that piece, just so you have an idea what's off. This is the revenue page that I'm going to review, the last page attached. So last year, you ran pretty tight, returned eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, so it's always zero that we're projecting. Catastrophic aid is money that we can recoup from students that are placed out of district that is supposed to be funded at a hundred percent from the state, but is only now funded at sixty percent. So any child that's placed out of district and they exceed three and a half times our tuition, we do get recouped some for that, but it's not at what the law says. So we do get some money back for that. Adequate education grant, this is what we've talked about a few months ago. It's kind of a one-time increase. It's, remember, we talked, it came back this year, and then, and, and this coming up budget as well, so, but that's it. There's not, it's going to go back to its original formula, as far as we know, unless something significantly changes. So that's where that money, money is. Security grant is at zero right now.
Can I take a step back to the...
Yeah.
Have we not received the additional increase there? This, this number would have gone down significantly from what we had last year, would it, would it not?
Correct, yeah.
So we're not only seeing an increase, but we're seeing a significant increase over what was projected?
What was projected, right?
Correct, okay, thank you.
Uh, other federal sources, you don't get anything from the Forest Reserve. Medicaid is money that's recouped from students who are Medicaid-eligible that, that have special education services, so we can recoup sometimes for rehabilitative assistance, occupational therapy, speech pathology, whatever medical services that a student requires, we could sometimes recoup for that. But that is, is decreasing, we're projecting as well. It's kind of going through the state level right now. Regular ed tuition, so this is students that are paying tuition to come to Plymouth Elementary is going down to sixty-eight thousand unless some other folks come in to, to tuition their kids in. Special ed tuition, so you have two, you have two behavioral programs within Plymouth Elementary that can offset some of your special education costs. So those are the costs of students from other districts attending Plymouth Elementary for the behavioral programs. Preschool assists, so these are other districts paying for preschool services to offset some of your costs as well, and that's, that's for regular ed preschool, not special ed. The next line down is your IDEA funding, which is a federal grant, which is, is preschool assist at a hundred and eighty thousand, so that does offset some of the costs. Earnings on investment, one. Peptuition, so this is preschool, again, preschool students, special ed students coming into the district from other districts, that's the, the cost for that piece. Uh, no reimbursement for speech, transfer from Capital Reserve Fund is at zero. Title II reimbursement, so again, that's a federal grant. We do see a general decrease as far as what we're getting for funds federally. That's down to one. Title I reimbursement, we're looking at that going up a little bit, although not at, at one eighteen, a hundred and eighteen thousand, one thirty-two. Child nutrition hot lunch program, is that supposed to be at a one fifty?
It should be one fifty, I'm not going to see if the...
Dan's correcting that right now.
But I want to see if the calculation goes off there.
Yep. Yep. Um, and then, we'll look at the bottom line in there. So basically, it would decrease a little bit as well. So there's still an increase, so you see the adequacy was kind of swallowed up with, with some of the costs that are required right now. So that's the first draft of appropriations. So what I'm looking for from the board, consider, you know, knowing that the tax rate obviously is a burden this year. If, if we do cut, it would, we'd be going into personnel. That would be the, the way to significantly decrease the tax rate. So it's just something to be aware of with, with that.
So I, I can't speak to what happened between the last time this was reviewed, this was printed this morning for you, but putting the food service revenue back in where it belongs, the hundred and fifty number brings the change in district's assessment down by that same number, one fifty. So the change now becomes one seventy-one, one seventeen in its current standard format, which is a change of three point one seven percent, or thirty-six cents per thousand, for the current valuation. I'm sorry for the misprint there on the revenue sheet, I don't have an explanation for it.
What was the percent, do you?
So the piece with this, with this year's budget process, that you wouldn't have as many Warren articles as that you'd have in the past, a lot of that stuff is absorbed into the appropriations. I think for future conversations, as far as Warren articles, there's been public input regarding if you wanted to discuss a Capital Reserve account. There's been talk about the funds that we could get for the security. And then, other than that, you don't have any negotiations this year, so that wouldn't be part of it, too.
Dan, can I ask a quick question? It, it appears that, yeah, if we subtract our revenue from our budget, it's the amount to be raised by taxes, yes?
Correct.
And our amount to be raised by taxes is roughly seventy-five thousand dollars more than it was last year, just as a raw numbers of revenue in there, does that sound right? But doesn't sound like that much of an increase as it is.
So I'm getting, I'm getting one seventy-one.
One seventy-one?
Yeah, so it was the, the three twenty that was there a minute ago minus the one fifty, but for some reason, the one fifty dropped out of the food service revenue.
So the amount to be raised by taxes is still at one fifty? But the district assessment is also... Okay.
But that, that, so would, that's the same thing, in my, in my legal. Oh, so when you say the district assessment, that to me is the same thing, did I read, did I just understand the question?
No, no, I was, I was, when I see a statement, I was thinking property values, that's what I was thinking.
Oh, all right, so the valuation, that's an interesting question. When the tax rates first came out this, this fall, I, I did reach out to the town. I thought it was, I just thought it was interesting, I lived nearby, I lived close by, but the total valuation of the town went down about two million dollars from last year.
Really?
And just driving along Tarry Mountain Highway, I was expecting an increase, which would have the inverse effect on the, on the tax rate, right, all things being equal? And the explanation I was given by the town was that, two parts. Number one, the co-op took a large write-down, possibly moving inventory or assets to another location. And the other piece was that all the development, like, for example, the market basket development area, that stuff, that wasn't completed by May one... that wasn't completed by May one, so it didn't come out of the tax rolls for this, this year's tax rate, assuming it would be in the tax rolls for next year's tax rate. And I didn't get into the conversations about graduated progression and, you know, progression building, that sort of thing.
Wasn't there also recently a judgment where, I think there was a suit against the town for assessed values of some of the properties that buy Walmart?
I honestly have no knowledge about that stuff.
The property one, I started challenging the, the assessment of those, and they would come down a little bit too. All right, thank you.
Sure.
So the, even if we have a flat assessment of, in your terms?
Yeah.
And the tax rate goes down, we'll see a tax rate increase from?
If we have a flat budgetary assessments, and the valuation of the town goes down, the rate goes up.
Right, okay, thank you. So the question is. So we're carrying a budget line item. If we wanted to trim from the budget, as I mentioned, there would be a personnel, there's one FTE in personnel that we didn't fill this year, which would come out, but my recommendation would be if we were going to do that, we should probably look at a warrant for the potential for filling a reading specialist position, if, if we're gonna consider that. I would like, yeah, I mean, 'cause if we remove one FTE from the salaries in eleven hundred, one ten, are there other places that hits in terms of other line items? Are they, are they all, is everything?
Yeah, so the one place, in addition to the eleven hundred section on page one of your budget, you'd see a reduction, would be in healthcare, which we have consolidated all departments into one line at the very bottom.
Okay.
You'd see a change there.
So there'd be a slight reduction there.
Yeah.
So Phil, what are you proposing?
What I'm proposing is that we could look at reducing the F, so we, last year we budgeted for an additional educator position in case we wanted to add a third teacher. And based on our enrollment currently, my, my proposal is to remove that, since we didn't hire anyone this year and it wasn't needed. And based on the current enrollment numbers, I, I don't anticipate that we need that. But I do think that if we do that, we should probably look at funding a reading specialist as a warrant article if the community would support that. So that would take a decision out of the budget, but put it up in a warrant article for the voters to decide on.
But then would be part of the budget next year?
If it's approved.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So are there other places that, given, my, I'm pretty happy with the budget in most places, and I think that, given the fact that we have a source of funding this year that we're not gonna see in the future, I think it would be a good year to hit a few of those replacement items that we've been deferring. Recognizing that we will still have other, other things to replace in the near future, and we may not have the revenue that we have this year in the future. But I do think it would be good if we could tighten it up from my position, from my perspective, at least one FTE on the one-ten line. Does anybody else have thoughts on that?
I think that's reasonable.
I agree with that, that's reasonable. Does that look like tax structure wise?
Sorry, what is what?
If you're, if the warrant article is approved, what's that looking like for the taxpayers?
You're talking, taking the one out of the FTE, if it's approved, it's gonna be a wash.
Is it a wash?
It's gonna be a wash.
Okay, all right, that's really what I was asking.
But it puts the, it puts the decision in the hands of the voters.
Yes, yeah.
So for draft two, I will take out one full-time equivalent in the eleven hundred account. And all of you were in agreement that you're gonna put on a warrant article a reading interventionist?
All right.
Good, thank you. All right, animals in school policy, the second reading, did you all get a chance to read it?
So basically, I added the part to make sure animals are controlled and leashed.
Yeah.
On school property.
Yeah.
Was that the only change from?
Yeah, that was basically.
And I think that leaves sufficient allowance for enforcement if we need to.
Yep, and then it's up to administration as far as there's, if there's any visiting pets, that it be approved by administration.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great job. And then you have to talk about the snowplow bid, as other visits?
Yes, so your last contract has expired, so we received one bid for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-three from Piper, who does it now. And then the, the costs are the same, right?
Couple hundred bucks.
Couple hundred bucks.
So they're, they're, this, this winner that we're in right now, we're in the final year of a three-year contract. So we're stretching, so the bid was up for the next three winners after this one. And they were up about two hundred, two hundred, excuse me, three hundred dollars for this district in total. But we have all three, we, we put it out as either individual for Runne, Plymouth, and the Peavy Baker District. If they consolidate, they give a discount, so your actual cost for the next three years, above you have about a hundred bucks.
Do we do that as a, it's a set fee versus?
The flat rate, not per load.
It's not a per load.
Correct. So the proposal for the next three years is ten thousand three hundred fifty dollars. For all three districts, Brianna, it'll be a little bit less, it'll be about ten thousand two fifty per, per winner. From the point where the town stops plowing, right at the bottom of the hill, for all the blacktop, so let's say we're pulling elementary school.
And that's separate?
From high school, correct.
The budget.
Yeah.
That's built right into it, so I don't think.
It's built in.
Yeah, okay. I need approval.
I mean, that we approve the proposal as written?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
It's a contract, not a proposal, so I have.
Yeah. Yeah. Privilege of the floor, number two.
I had a question about salaries in line at one twenty-six for the preschool. Because it says that it's one point zero FTE for both one hundred seventy thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars. Which line is it, one twenty-six?
Page four.
Page four.
I apologize, one point eight. One point eight.
Typo?
Yeah. I'll fix that.
Is there more to it than salary there?
I think, I, so, not now, I don't know.
Unless it's the one point oh plus the one point eight.
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize, it's a one point oh regular ed teacher and a one point eight special ed teachers. So two point eight total. Yeah.
Good call. Thank you.
It's expensive preschool teacher.
Sorry about that.
That's what Kelly just said, she's gonna.
There are probably some moms that deserve that kind of advice.
Thank you.
So when does the town receive the tax money back from the state?
Which tax grant, what are you always speaking about?
The state, a month or two ago, passed a bill.
Is this the state budget that includes the enhanced adequacy aid? So the, the town doesn't receive that money? That comes directly to the school district from the state? If we're talking about adequacy aid? About a two and a half million, about a two, two-plus million dollar number this year?
I'm not sure if it was the adequacy aid, but last, two school board meetings ago, somebody said it came back to the taxpayers.
Well, it does in the form of a revenue to the school district to reduce the tax rate on the taxpayers of the town. You're not gonna get a check from, you aren't gonna get a check from the state.
They said that our tax, our tax bill would go down.
So it, it goes down in the sense that if.
You guys get the money, so the school tax bill goes down?
The, the school tax bill goes, if the appropriation, which is the spending authority, has stayed the same, yes, the tax bill would go down, but if spending goes up, and the, and the revenue goes up as well, it depends on whether they're proportionate or equal values. But, for example, when, when the budget, yeah, that's the number, the adequacy number, so.
So on the revenue sheet, it's the thirty-one-ten line.
Right, so when the budget for the current year was developed, I'm gonna give you the exact number that was budgeted for adequacy. So when the current year's budget was built a year ago, that line that you see thirty-one-ten, the revenue line, was budgeted at two million one hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. Because of the state budget that was passed this fall, that number went up to two million four hundred eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. That's the number you see in your left-hand column there. So that was a difference of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars that reduced the amount of taxation locally for the Plymouth School District portion of the town of Plymouth tax bill, does that make sense? Similarly, that number goes up next year to the two point six million dollar number you see in the right column. We do believe that in the following subsequent years, it's gonna go back down to previous levels. That was part of the grand bargain, if you will, at the state level. But that, once again, that's a, that's a revenue that offsets the total spending when, when, when the state determines what the tax rate for the town is gonna be locally.
I was also wondering if there would be a decrease in the office of superintendent services because Mark Allen is retiring?
So, yeah, so there's not a decrease. There is actually an increase because another position's been added, which is the need for an SAU-wide technology director, was determined by the SAU board.
So how much are they getting paid?
I don't know, that, that, I want to say, yeah, I believe the position pays, either between ninety-five and a hundred thousand.
Because I thought Mark was getting paid around one seventy or?
So to be clear, his position is not being eliminated. You have, you would have a new superintendent, and you're gonna have two assistant superintendents still. And there might be, and then there's some savings budgeted between the, the cost of the retiring superintendent and the projected salary for the new superintendent, which we don't have that number yet. And it is a lower number for sure, but other expenses affect as well. You have other costs, so for example, well, no, no. Costs that can't be discussed. So, once again, the, the budget for the SAU was built on the retirement of the existing superintendent and a new superintendent being, being promoted to that level. So.
Why does SAU forty-eight have two assistant superintendents and a superintendent?
There's nine school districts, so nine different boards. So we split up the boards. So I'll act right now as the assistant superintendent for a certain amount of schools, as well as we oversee. So we have no curriculum coordinator, so those are jobs that, that we take on as well. And just with all the responsibilities for all nine districts, it's.
Is it difficult to have that many districts?
Yeah.
It's the most complex SAU in the state.
Yeah, 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 so.
I, I would agree that other places I've lived, I've seen maybe two or three elementary schools feeding into one middle school and one high school, but, yeah, they're.
In New Hampshire with local control, it's usually one district, one superintendent and curriculum coordinator or whatever they have. So we do cost share for all nine districts.
I, I would like to extend an invitation that the, the SAU, when, when the SAU-wide board meets, those meetings are also open to the public. Typically, to have a quorum at those meetings, you have to have a majority of individual school boards represented, so that board can make decisions. So things like hiring superintendent staff happen at that level, not at this level.
Where are those supposed to be?
They would also be on the, the SAU website.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the SAU board meets twice a year, to be clear. They meet in December and they meet in May.
Oh, when you were talking about adding a warrant article for the, the reading specialist or interventionist, as you called it, do you foresee that the salary of the reading interventionist would be the same as the salary of the leading full-time position? Because I thought that reading interventionist specialists were at a higher salary level.
So typically, we go middle of the road as far as projecting budget, and it isn't a master's degree, because you have a reading specialist, you do require to have a, a master's, so it would be a little bit higher.
Just being concerned about the forty percent of like the second grade class just meeting the benchmark when it comes to reading, there are other classes, like the third grade class, that are also low on their NYSE scales. I'm concerned about putting something as important as a reading specialist on a warrant article, having voters decide on that, when I feel like academics need to be a focus. Is there any way that anything else that is not academic be put on a warrant article? The voters to decide?
It's up to you.
Do you have suggestions?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess my other question is, we're striving for eighty-five percent on the NYSE scale, and we have classes that are in the forties. How can we address that if our budget is so tight? And how can, what, is there something else that we can pull from? Instead of saying to the voters here, pay extra money for kids that are having difficulty reading, but they are not gonna know that like sixty percent of secondary class has below state standards. So is that really a fair thing? It's easy to say, oh, that would pacify them, but I really don't think it's fixing the issue that we need to discuss.
So if you have some suggestions of where else, looking at the budget, we're always mindful of the budget. So in order to get the reading specialists, the money has to come from somewhere else.
Right.
So if there's suggestions that you have of where you think we should cut, then I'm happy to hear those suggestions. I think as a board, we're trying to do the best that we can to make, appease everyone without having to, to keep Plymouth where it's at. So if you, you know, review the budget, I mean, I, before I was on the school board, I went line by line, and I sat with Julie, and I said, hey, why are we spending money here? What's this money for? As a town person, before I was even on the school board. So if you wanna review the budget and bring it to Julie and make suggestions, I'm happy to hear those suggestions.
Well, and I would appreciate your suggestions too, and I also know, I would like to know if forty percent is okay. I mean, I thought we were striving for like eighty-five percent.
I don't think anybody's okay with some part. I'm gonna, I'm gonna venture out to speak for the board on that.
Right, it's glaringly obvious.
Right, but I think it's also, if we're putting it out for a warrant article, I think that we need to educate the public better. And so I think that's part of our community, educating the public on what the situation. And so I think that's part of our community, educating the public on what the situation is. But what I can't overlook is something that we can't avoid is the cost of the special education that we're paying for, that is also needed and required. And that has increased significantly. So that is, that's like a big jump that we're paying a lot of money for, that is also necessary. And I don't, I'm not even in disagreement of a reading specialist, to be honest with you, but I think we have to be fiscally responsible to the community when we're making decisions. So that's why Amy's saying, look at the budget and give us, help us, look at suggestions, and we really wanna listen to that. You know, we hear, don't, don't increase the class sizes and add a reading specialist. So we're, we're feeling our hands are a bit tied in making that decision to, well, what is best? Where are the teachers in our schools, you know, what are, what is their feedback? In, in terms of if we have to choose, help us make that decision better.
You have to remember, it's not all dependent on a person as what the outcome is. So definitely Julie and Kelly are looking at instructional practices. You're looking at curriculum alignment. You're looking at, our student, the NWA is one snapshot, one day, for 45 minutes. So if the kids are taking it in second grade for the first time, which is a new test from the K1's model, then that's a big learning curve. So what are we doing to kind of change? A person is just one piece of many pieces of the puzzle. So that's something that we're looking at all the time. And do know with the SAS, which classes are significant below, or with the NWA, which ones are significantly below, and it's not just a person that changes the outcome. So I think that's something that the administration here has been working on with teachers and, and already has started tweaking some pieces. But it's just one of many different variables. And it is a point of data, and it's not good, so how, you know, we'll look at that piece.
What's the overall benchmark? What's the 30,000-foot view? If the NWA is just one day in time for a 45-day test, what other data points do you have? And what's your overall view to say our students here are achieving this 85%? Like, where, where does that number exist, or where does that assessment exist?
Yeah, so the district assessment is the NWA, so that's definitely a, a point we look at. We look at Ames Web data as far as progress monitoring, as far as that goes. But looking at growth and then the proficiency levels. Julie can speak to more about what assessments are used as far as curriculum-based pieces, but there's multiple data points that, that we hope all the schools look at as far as, yeah, we look at proficiency, we look at growth, which now the state has shifted from not just proficiency, but to growth model as well. So that's definitely something that we look at, but Julie can speak to a little bit more of that.
And for the primary wing especially, we use that Bontes and Penal, which is a one-by, one-on-one comprehension piece. So it's, it's a battery of those three pieces that really gives us a good, good viewpoint of the student. Plus the day-to-day work with the student, the formative assessments that teachers do every day.
I can, I can tell you that, you know, from my own personal experience, that my daughter did not receive the, the help and the intervention she needed until I got her into, you know, a special ed referral. I think putting it to a warrant article is not a good idea, considering that I've come and spoken to you guys over and over about this, and even on the school board, and the administration is not supportive of it. So I don't think that, I, I don't think that the, the, the community will be supportive, because I don't, I don't feel like I have anyone's support here.
I don't think that we're not supportive of it. I, I disagree personally with that. I've gone through the same steps as you, to share personal. And when I stepped forward, I got help that I needed. So I don't think anybody's not in support of it. But we brought some reports forward last school board meeting that did show growth, which was an important benchmark, I think, for me, is that if, if we're seeing improvement, we may not be, I, I think bringing that point up as to the first time they're taking this test in the second grade, I mean, the first time I took the SATs, I bombed it, right? There's a learning curve to it as well, but if we're start, if we're seeing growth over the long haul, which we did see in that report that you brought, and, and we had asked for that. So that, I think, is indicative of us supporting, looking into this. But balancing how to make those decisions of keeping class sizes small, adding, you know, an FTE while the costs, while the costs of special education go up and our funding is going down. So we're, I, I would love, I think we all would love suggestions, and that's our way of kind of showing support, is how can we, how do you suggest we do it?
My suggestion would be to get the proper interventions and, and support that the kids need in kindergarten, first, and second grade, so that they, so that there aren't as many kids that need special ed services later on. And there is research to support that.
But we're, I don't know how to pay for that. Where do we come up?
We have it in the budget right now.
But I guess what I'm saying is, we're also, this is an unreliable number, the special ed. We're paying for things that we, it'd be like, I don't wanna downplay this, but it'd be like saying, you know what, I need a 52-inch TV, because my 24-inch one isn't as clear of a picture. I have, I, I don't mean to downplay it at all, but it's like, I have something in place. We don't know what the anticipated costs are going to be if special education is continuing to fall on our shoulders as, as P, as PES. And we're getting more and more people moving into the homeless shelters. I mean, the, the demographic has changed significantly, which has put us in a very big pickle as a school board in terms of making that decision, not knowing. So what if we have an influx of that demographic come in, and we've approved this position? Now what are we cutting?
So what about discussions on cutting other positions?
That's what, that's what we're asking. But that's what we're asking for your suggestions on.
And do, do, does the primary wing need Spanish? Does the primary wing need STEM, you know? Yes, in middle school, that sounds great, but do they really, I mean, I think it's more important for them to learn how to read English, and still learn to speak Spanish, and, and, you know, get it out in first grade.
I mean, I would support that. I mean, if you're decreasing the FTE for STEM, if you're decreasing the FTE for Spanish, to take those resources, to take those specials out of the primary wing to focus more on the literacy and the math, because even, there was no growth actually from the second grade to the third grade. It went from 68% to 50%. I mean, that's not showing growth on the, on the state standards. And that wasn't the, the only situation. I mean, if you take away some of those extra specials to get someone who are tier two and tier three students that are struggling, then maybe that would be beneficial. But I mean, there is an option. It may not be popular, but.
Well, it's good to hear suggestions though, because we run into walls ourselves, you know?
And I just wanna remind you guys that there, that it's in the administrative, you know, standards for the state. I can read it to you again. It provides, one, the services of a certified principal, a certified library media specialist, and a certified guidance counselor, which Kyla noted that you have to have the, the media specialist, great. Two, for the hiring and training of educators certified under ED 500 to teach classes and courses in their certified content area. Three, in each elementary school, the services of a reading specialist and library media specialist to facilitate the delivery of the language arts and reading program. It's right there. I don't know how you can argue with that.
I don't think anyone's arguing, to be honest with you. This is a really difficult decision that we have been talking about repeatedly. And again, I don't even disagree with you, but we are not making decisions for ourselves and our own children. We're making decisions for the community. We're making decisions for, we have to consider everything. It's not an easy decision to make, and we do have teachers who are reading specialists.
They're certified.
They're certified.
Yes, but they're not serving the services of a reading specialist. They're not serving as a reading specialist.
So we can, we can work with whatever staff that are given to us as far as adjusting schedules for specialists to, to provide reading intervention. We've done it creatively across the district in many different ways to fulfill some of the requirements. So whatever is the board's wish is what, we'll make it work.
I remember what I was gonna say. I'm sorry. But just, if we have the qualified teachers, we have the small classrooms, we have the process for the intervention plan that was handed out last month at the board meeting, and it's showing that students are getting between one hour and 45 minutes to two hours of literacy every day for the second, third, and fourth grade classes, and then additional interventions on top of that, the two, tier two and the tier three students. Then why aren't we seeing more progress? Why aren't we seeing more growth for these students where, I mean, two hours a day of literacy? That's, if that is truly happening, that is amazing to me, considering how jam-packed their schedules are. In addition to the recess, the lunch, the snacks, the specials, and that's amazing. I mean, and we have amazing teachers to do this. They're highly qualified. Then, oh, why aren't we seeing more growth across the board for our students? So that's why I have a difficult time putting that out to the voters to decide on something like that. When you wouldn't put something like special education that is mandated and needed for those students, why are you putting something like a reading specialist, which many students could benefit for? Why are you putting that on a warrant article?
Sarah, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, I have a question. The $1,400 every spending and tuitioning out special education stuff, is there anything that we could add to our current existing programs? I understand that they're also cost money, but potentially less money than tuitioning out to a specific program?
I would say no at this point, based on the needs. We, we try to keep kids here as long as possible. And like I said, the only time they're being sent out is if they're involved through the foster care system in DCY that they're pulled, that, so we don't have a lot of say in that piece, or there's severe medical pieces as well. So that seems to be the significant piece. As far as providing services for behavioral students, we do keep a lot of students in district for those needs specifically. But once, once they become more complicated, that's when they're sent out. But I wish we could. I wish we, we could.
One of the things on the warrant article is where it says the school board recommends or does not recommend. Would you be saying that you recommend the addition of the specialist, the reading specialist?
Yes, yes, I would.
Does anybody know when the last time the town voted down a warrant article that the school board recommended?
This is only my seventh year here, and I haven't seen it yet.
Been here a lot of years, I just never seen it happen.
No, is there anything else? Thank you.